Okay, let's go ahead and get started then, our special meeting. Thank you all for joining. I think we have quorum. Been hearing a lot about conversations that are related to Portland Clean Energy Fund and in the relationship between the fund, its original language that was set up and the new language that's being proposed. So this meeting is really for the Forestry Commission to come to ideally a consensus around what we would like to at least offer in terms of our support to this particular proposal that's on the table. Any challenges, any concerns we have about it and to kind of find a way to put that into a a letter to city council and I believe they are going to be meeting, Brian, correct me if I'm wrong. Is it tomorrow on just an initial conversation about this?
Next week, the first reading ordinance will be on the 19th.
On the 19th, thank you. That's right. That's right. My week's messed up. Yeah, on the 19th, council and it's not to vote is what I understand. It's not a vote on the 19th. It's a conversation. Soliciting input from groups like ours, the commission, other city volunteer groups as well as communities and community-based organizations and any other proposed interest. So today, that's our main, that's our main conversation. So I'm gonna turn it over. I think Brian actually opened it up to public comments first, I think, as we usually do.
We've got two. One, one public commenter who signed up. So they weren't able to make it. And so they, he provided a brief written statement that I forwarded to everyone earlier today. But then we have two others. So Damon is actually next on the list. So it looks like he's here. I'll bring him in into the meeting.
Great. Hello, Damon.
Hello there. Unmuted. We're just see it from the side of things. Hey, so the, my, my name is Damon Strask. I'm a business owner in Portland. I operate tree ecology, tree care. So my statement is that the UFC statement, while wonderful as usual, thank you, Daniel, needs to go further and request that PSF funding go to critical code changes that can actually provide protection of large form mature trees on private and public properties, both in development and non-development situations. We all know that growing trees, tree planting is one, a wonderful thing and feels good, but it takes forever for those trees to maybe get to their their full functional form. And so protecting actual trees that are living is going to be huge. In addition, every bureau and community organization possible must be planting trees in Oregon, in Portland. This means that planting funding should not be solely in the PUFS silo, but should be distributed amongst bureaus that have proven track records of planting and establishing street trees in Portland. With the specter of not only climate change, but invasive and deadly insects such as emerald ash core, no longer at our doorstep, but setting our house on fire. Now is the time to come together toward the common goal of truly increasing our urban canopy through not only planting, but retention of our current canopy.
Great. Thanks. Thanks, Damon.
Thanks, Damon. You're welcome. Thank you.
Yeah. Good to, good to hear from you again.
Good talking to you guys.
All right.
All right. We have one more. Brenna Bell, let me Brenna, you should be able to unmute now.
All right, I am unmute. Hi, everyone. My name is Brenna Bell. I am the climate manager for 350 PDX. And work with the Forest Defense Team. We've been working a lot on issues of shade equity and worked with many of you on that. And I also wanted to talk a little bit about your letter, which is great. And I know that it's one of your main topics today. So I just wanted to give a couple of very specific, maybe editorial invitations to editorial change. And so the first is on your fourth paragraph where it says, the Urban Forestry Commission and a number of community organizations, believe it is critical that the city take responsibility for maintaining Portland's street tree assets. While I agree deeply with the intention, I think the word responsibility there might be a little confusing. Because it assumes, when you hear the word responsibility, one could also assume that you mean control. And I think one of the things that people have the most heartburn about these PSF code changes. I mean, it's fantastic, the focus is, but there is a potential loss of community control that will happen as money goes towards the city and towards for-profit businesses, as decision-making around funding leaves the hands of the PSF committee and goes into the hands of the city. And so I encourage you to change the word responsibility to be more clear that it's perhaps you're taking financial responsibility, you're paying for the work, but not necessarily in a way that controls the work. Also that it's a supporting role, not a directorial role. Because that is, you know, like Damon just said before me, that is definitely a concern that more and more of the work is just consolidating in urban forestry in a way that hasn't necessarily always been transparent or open to as much public engagement. And then there's just one other suggestion that I have again around wording. And that's in the second to last paragraph where you're talking about community involvement. And you end with saying, the process, design and outcome of these plans must ensure community involvement. I've been on city committees and state committees involved, but my involvement didn't lead to any significant changes. And I think most people who have been involved in this, maybe even you at the Urban Forestry Commission, you're involved, but that doesn't necessarily mean you have control. You are able to make decisions that lead to direction. So I would suggest having a stronger word than involvement there and suggest that you have control or you have community decision-making power. Because I think, again, PSF was created to be a community fund for marginalized communities. And the grants would be decided by representatives of those communities. And that's really up for change in these proposed amendments. So the heart of your letter, I believe, is saying that, like, it's important that PSF money goes to benefit the communities that it was created for, but I would strongly encourage you to have slightly more like robust language about keeping control and decision-making in the hands of the affected communities. And aside from that, it's great. I think we're, we're all really aligned on this being, you know, potentially an amazing thing for Portland trees, but only if people who have felt like cut out of the conversation for so long are not only included in the conversation, but get to direct it. And you know, that, that hasn't necessarily been the urban forestry's track record. And I think that's trying to change. But in the, in the interim, until there's a real trust that that will change, I think we need to keep the money in the hands of the people. So that's what I got. And thanks so much for this discussion. And I'm really interested to stay here and see what you're talking about today.
Thanks so much, Brenna. Good to hear from you. Really well, well stated. Great points. We'll touch back on as a commission here. Good. Brian? We go to the next person?
Um, I don't see anyone else with their hand raised or anyone else who signed up ahead of time. So I think we're good to move on.
Okay. Let's let's get into our conversation then about, I think there are three, there are three attachments to the Urban Forestry Commission website that Brian, thank you again, putting that up. One of them is the letter. So unless we want to start with a PSF proposed change memo or I might suggest we presume that the PSF change memo, as well as the proposed changes PSF, unless there's some reiteration of that, that anybody wants to make, we can go into the letter. See if there's anything there that needs to be revised. Brian, I see your hand up.
Yeah, Bev, I was actually thinking, so Micah Mescol is here. He was involved in, I think, a lot of the process that got to this point. So he and I kind of touched base a little bit and we kind of talked through, maybe I would talk through just sort of like the scope of the changes being proposed. And then, and it's really, it's really going to be coming from a lot of the documents that have already been provided, but just to try to provide and kind of shape the conversation a little bit. And then Mike is available if there are specific questions or if he wants to add anything more specific as well. So that's how it is. Everyone else, I'll just kind of talk really quickly and then let the, let the conversation take place.
Sounds good.
Great. Thanks. So yeah, there are, there are a few changes being proposed. I've tried to group these into sort of five categories. And if you have that FAQ document that Bruce sent around, that's been a really great resource. So I encourage you to be looking at that as well. But as I looked through it, I saw five kind of key changes. The first one is removing the funding allocation requirement. So in the original concept in the ballot measure and then what's in city code, it sets sort of guidance on what percentage of the funding will go to which issue. So it says a certain percentage will go to renewable energy, a certain percentage will go to climate jobs training. These code changes would remove those and basically allow the PSF committee to have broader discretion of sort of where the funds go. And then it did two other things in that area is it removed one of those funding categories and it's this future innovation category. So that's one funding category that's been removed. But then it adds three others. It adds transportation, D, D, carbonization. It adds organizational capacity building and other projects that reduce or reduce or sequester greenhouse, greenhouse gases. So in general, it's sort of like broadening the types of projects that can be funded and gives the program more, more discretion on that. Another change is it is increasing the percentage of funds that can go towards, towards administrative costs. And it also better defines what qualifies as administrative expenses. So the original cap was 5%. I know from interaction with the program staff that that has been really challenging. And so it increases it to 12, 12%. And it more clearly defines admin as the program expenses, the PSF program that's housed within the Bureau of Planning and Sustainability. It doesn't seem to be applying to the recipients. I, it's the way I'm reading it. It doesn't look like a nonprofit that's receiving this grant would have to define what their admin expenses necessarily. Those would just be considered program expenses because they're the recipient doing the work that they're funded to do. So that seems like a really important change. And then the other area is, which I think is where Mike will be really helpful is it, it, it allows PSF to create these climate investment plans and they, they are five-year plans where they develop measurable goals and outcomes. And it looks to be that this, this is really intended to define. Yeah. What are, what is, what is the intention of the fund and what are, what are the sorts of efforts and programs that they want to be funding underneath these climate, climate investment plans? And maybe, yeah, maybe at the end of this, Mike, I can talk a little bit more about those. But the, it's a, and the other two I wanted to point out, right now, it's sort of like all of the funding seems to be in this sort of like community responsive grant model. Where within the sort of funding categories, nonprofits submit applications for funding. They, they, they bring project ideas to PSF and PSF funds those. Only nonprofits are allowed to respond to those. This change would create a sort of second type of funding mechanism called these strategic initiatives. And the intention here seems to be to allow PSF to be more directive in terms of what types of work they'd like to be done. And the, when Director Long was here last week and talked about $40 million over five years specifically for tree planting, that is under the strategic initiative model. It's to allow PSF to sort of be more prescriptive in terms of what kind of projects they would like to see. And a significant change there is under the strategic initiative, for-profit organizations could receive funding as well. So in general, this is opening up to not just nonprofits, but government organizations, but also for-profit as well in some specific scenarios. That's the broad brush of what I was able to kind of sense out from this. Micah, feel free to, you know, correct or clarify. Or yeah, maybe we can move on to the conversation.
Yeah, I can just touch, I'll add like one point of context to each of the five. Just, you did a great job reviewing it and I'll introduce myself to the group. Name's Micah Mescol, he/him pronouns, and I work for Portland Audubon. And for Portland Audubon, I was deeply involved in the, in the creation and support of the PSF campaign that passed voters in 2018. And since then, I've been a a steering committee member of the PSF Coalition, which has been working on the implementation of this new program. And so has been following it through for many years now, helping inform, shape and and improve upon the, the program as a whole. So if, yeah, connected with most staff and worked with city commissioners to kind of like, yeah, to help inform the program. So on the first, the allocation percentage requirement. A reason, one reason for doing that is to really allow the program as a whole to remain flexible to not have so many constraints. The percentages will remain in that the program will prioritize the four different buckets equally, but they don't want to be constrained to having to like decline a good grant because it goes over, it would tip the the funding bucket percentage over the allotted percentage. So that's that was one of the reasons for that around administrative costs. Upping that will really allow for a swifter implementation and distribution of funds. As we've, as they found, PSF staff has found over the two RFPs, you just don't have enough staff to like provide the amount of assistance and support to grantees in order for them to successfully implement their programs. And as we're scaling up with additional funding and these new programs, it's really necessary to have additional staff to help lead that and to work with the different bureaus within the CIP developments and implementations that are, that are going to come forward around the community responsive model, which is the traditional model that had run out the two RFPs. That is not going away. That is going to continue. And community groups will be the only ones that will be eligible for those. These additional changes are going to be an additive program that will really, that will also involve opportunities for CBOs to to secure a significant amount of that funding. So it's really just opening up a second bucket as, as Brian mentioned. And yeah, allow for a broader expansion of PSF work.
Thanks, Micah. Roberta, I see your hand up. Sure. I'd love to go around eventually on this letter, but let's, let's start off with Roberta's comment first.
Well, a couple of things. Hi, everybody. I wanted to mention, I don't think it was mentioned, that Micah Mescol has a longtime member of the Urban Forestry Commission's Policy Advisory Committee. He, he is, he has been working with the commission for years and he gave an excellent presentation, longer presentation about the PSF program changes and the code changes at the policy committee meeting during which we discussed how the Forestry Commission might, might submit input on this and from which this draft letter came in. If it's okay, we also thought we would take just maybe a couple of minutes to talk about the letter and kind of what was intended here. If that's helpful to, you know, segue to the letter, would that be okay with folks? I can kind of give an overview and then others can, in the committee can fill in anything I missed. Is that, is that good with the group?
It looks like affirmative here.
Okay. Okay. Cause you know, where does the letter come from? Right? So, so with the background that, that you have now, you know, we talked about what is, what is the forestry commission's role here? You know, what should the forestry commission comment on? And it's always sometimes a little challenging to figure out how far, how far to take it, what content matter to, to cover and, and we'll make sure the tone is constructive and so forth. So you know, the focus we took was, was on trees and we did take it a bit further than that, but I'm going to go through the intent here. The intent was one to recognize and commend the efforts of, of the leadership and the staff and others who participated, of which there were many, as Mike had discussed. Then to address the, the needs to evolve the PSF program. Building capacity for one in the community, but also within, you know, the city too, to basically learn from the first couple of years and, and evolve it to a place where we're dealing with a lot of, a lot of funds here. And the need to get them expended efficiently and effectively in a transparent way. To state the Urban Forestry Commission's appreciation and support for the elevation of trees and tree canopy as critical infrastructure that's absolutely needed to address the climate crisis and the inclusion of tree planting and maintenance as a, basically an urgent and immediate strategic initiative in the program. And the, and the dollars that go along with that, which ultimately probably aren't enough, but it's a big jump and hopefully we can evolve those numbers over time as it becomes clearer that how important this is in that climate crisis puzzle. We wanted to highlight, you know, we, we're going to use this leverage, this opportunity to highlight a related piece, which is the need for street tree maintenance, both to, to conserve and manage that, that asset and also to build capacity in the community to participate in, in this. We, we wanted to note that, and this kind of addresses Brenna Bell's comment to some extent that you, even, even with this, this proposal, we don't see the, the PSF piece of the puzzle is not a city infrastructure management program. It's not like how the city manages water or sewer or roads. If street trees are to recognize this critical infrastructure, the PSF piece of this that can, that can maybe pilot components of a program with community organizations and so forth. And, and, and start to look at how we might do that maybe more than we have, won't supplant the need for that. So when we talked about the city taking on responsibility or financial responsibility, we were, we were not intending to say that this should be done through PSF, but rather in, in addition to and beyond, way beyond PSF. So we wanted to distinguish, distinguish those for folks. We wanted to recognize the code amendments and that those changes must remain true to PSF's original goals and priorities, which is to support and empower the community with particular focus on underrepresented communities of color and lower income folks. And to basically that, that's a thread that runs through the letter and that any changes made need to be, need to be done consistent with that intent. And then finally, to recognize that, hey, there's going to be these large climate investment plans that are going to be developed that all help derive the strategic initiatives. And that it's the UF, the forestry commission's intent to participate in that, that we want to signal that we want to be part of that discussion. We want to participate in the, in the development of those not capital improvement plans. The CIP acronym is kind of confusing to some folks, the climate investment plan, CIPs. And, and also the development of what appears to be a new green infrastructure fund, which we don't really know much about, but we are looking forward to learning more about and supporting that. So that's kind of how we felt was appropriate, kind of within the purview of the forestry commission and and anyone else in the committee. It sounds like Megan wants to, Megan helped as well, as well as others. So.
Thanks, Roberta. We'll go around. I mean, I guess the main thing is, are there any revisions, any omissions that might need to be considered? Are there any, any general support in support of or in, in challenge to comments that might come up here? Maybe start with you, Megan, and then we'll go around and check with others.
Yeah. And before we actually do that, I just had a clarification, like point or something about this that, because Damon and his comment, and maybe this is a question for Brian or Micah, like made the comment about how funds going to urban forestry and not just urban forestry. And if I understand correctly, and I could be wrong, the, the growing the equitable tree canopy funds, that 40 million, is it, have we, we talked about this in the policy committee, so I can't remember. Is it clear, have we clarified that it would just go to urban forestry? Or I feel like we talked about that is not yet fully determined. But is that inaccurate? I just wanted to have, so we all understood that before discussing it.
Yeah, I, I don't think there's anything in those code changes that directs, that really determines where this money is going. I think it just allows for the possibility of a broader range of recipients to receive the funds as long as their, you know, proposed work is in line with what these climate, climate, climate action plans are.
Thank you, Brian.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it would be determined within the climate, the first climate investment plan.
And it seemed, Micah, you may know more about this. You know, it seemed too, that they're really going off of, there's some categories of those types of groups that can be eligible funds. And there are these criteria that what their proposal is, is really focused on that, right? Is that correct? Yeah.
Yeah, they'll start with that as well.
Thanks. That was pretty incoherent. So I'm impressed that you understood it. Thank you.
All right. I'd love to go around and check with you all about, if you've had a chance to digest Roberta's kind of overview, Micah's background and Brian's kind of framing. There are questions, concerns coming up with the letter that you'd like to bring up here, any resolutions, any proposals that might want to consider as well. We go around, who, let's get everyone at least to say something here. Whether you want to abstain, that's fine too, but just to even say, say as much. Adrian, let's go with you and we can do this popcorn style.
Yeah, thanks for these intros, because you know, a lot of this is somewhat obscure history and what was and you know, what's going to be with this. And we're probably still a little bit scratching our heads, you know, what is this really? So but you know, being in the grants world, at least in medicine, you know, looking at it, to me, the most winning role sort of in the future for Urban Forestry Commission would be figuring out the best partnerships to strengthen the role of community organization, community organization. So absolutely, you know, the tree maintenance is way up there and we all know why, but I also think it's planting. So, you know, I'd love to see our letter just have a little bit, not just lock us in as much to the maintenance part, but also to say that it's going to be critical to figure out how do we make something that's more than the sum of its parts, right? How do we create synergy? So some language around that.
Great. Thanks, Adrian. Who's next? I call on people like I do in class. It's always fun. What do you, yeah.
You just want to spell alphabetically?
Yeah, we could do alphabetically. It's true. Alphabetical, first name or last name. I'm going to do last name. I'm going to do first name. So it's easier for me to look at. It's like Daniel would probably be the first one up then. Or second one after Adrian.
So I'm on now. Okay. Um, yeah, I'm, I'm kind of struggling with what should go in the letter and what what we need to talk about and what sort of within our, our scope of, of talking about, because I have some real concerns with this whole plan, but I'm not sure how much of it is really something that we as the Urban Forestry Commission should be commenting on. I guess let's start off, I had an email exchange with Jillian Shoney, is that how you pronounce your last name? Carmen Rubio's Chief of Staff about this, because one of my concerns was just how well this had been vetted by city attorney's office, because when I look at what's proposed and what was in the resolution that voters passed, I see some definite changes and I would hate to see the whole And I would hate to see the whole program get kind of sidelined if somebody tried to you know, challenge it in court and have the whole thing thrown out. But I've been assured that city attorney's office has vetted the whole thing, so I guess my my fears are unfounded on that. But I guess one of the, one of the issues that I have is, um, okay, if you look at what's driving this, it's just that apparently there's a heck of a lot more money coming into city coffers than had been anticipated. I mean, a lot of money, and there's just no way that um community nonprofits are going to be able to do the kind of work. It's just not possible, because there's so much money. In fact, as I understand it, there are hundreds of millions of dollars accumulating in the fund. And that's money that needs to get out there on the street. So I understand the desire to try to open it up. To to get the work done, and I I, so I understand where that's coming from. And I guess considering that it's a job too big for community nonprofits at this point, this is probably just as good a a solution as any. But I guess when it comes to this cap of changing five percent to twelve percent administrative cap, that makes me really nervous and I really, I really think that's too much, because if you just look at the numbers, right? I mean, let's say it's fifty million dollars a year, that's six million dollars for administration by the city. Um, and I always get concerned with these kind of plans that call for a lot more money going to the city, because it basically means we're going to have new permanent jobs, permanent. And so once jobs get created like that in the public sector, nobody ever gets rid of them. And so I'm just concerned that this is kind of like this new set of jobs that even if we don't need them anymore, they won't go away, and that's money that could actually be going to getting the work done on the ground. So I have a, I have a concern, and I mean, if it, you know, if it was fifty million a year, six million and that's a lot of jobs, I mean, what, why do they need twelve percent? I mean, I would really like to know more about what the city is going to do with this, because it almost sounds like they're going to be doing more of these mega plans that we seem to get all the time. And I know I sound like I'm ranting here, but I think you get, get the sense of where I'm coming from on that. Um. Another issue I have is, you know, in terms of this forty million dollars for the urban can, or for urban forest canopy, and I I really get excited by that amount of money going in to try to fix some of the issues we've all been talking about. But if it's not going to be going to street tree work, I don't know where it's going to go to, because there are not really that many spaces to plant trees for the amount of forty million, if we're not going to be planting them in this, in the public right of way. So I guess I'd want to know a little bit more of that. You know, if if you look at what's been going on in the last few years, we've had money accumulating in the dollars that we have had to get trees in the ground. And we've kind of been lagging there, so I'm kind of wondering if we have the capacity to get forty million dollars over however many years that is in the ground. I I just, I guess I'd just like to see more of what the plans are for how that, how that would be going, going in, because I just wonder if, how how doable this is. I guess those are my comments.
Great, thanks, Danielle. If there are, as you're, as you're um making some comments um now, if there are speci- if there's specific language in the letter or specific areas where you think we could flesh out a bit more of what your concerns might be, I might encourage you to maybe um, yeah, put it in the chat, make a statement, uh, you know, let us know a specific paragraph, line, or something along those lines and um seeing if that would be worth, uh, uh, seeing if we could um integrate it into the letter as it's written. I know writing a letter as a commission or a committee is often the most cha- one of the more challenging things to do. Um, nevertheless, if there are those kinds of changes, please feel free to mention it in your um, in your comments here. Um, let's see, so go from Danielle. I would go, I think Ivory would be next. Ivory, did you want to say anything about the letter, about this process, about anything related to?
Yeah, my, uh, I think you can hear me now, I have to take out my earbuds for that. No further comments from me, so that I put it in the chat as well, so that'll free up time for folks who have more comments.
Great, thanks Ivory. Uh, Jen, I see your hand up, do you want to jump in?
Yes, thank you Vivek. Danielle, of course, excellent comments, as always. Uh, I wanted to just remind folks, Danielle, you were talking about, there's not really space for a lot of trees. That is true in some spaces, some particular types of spaces, like right of ways really challenging. There needs to be design and policy changes in in some cases to create more space. But we did do an assessment of canopy potential uh twenty eighteen, a couple of years ago now, and uh concluded that reasonably like removing areas that really cannot be planted with trees, soccer field streets, that sort of thing. Uh, canopy potential is almost fifty-three percent in Portland. Um, and so that and other assessments we've done, like the ninety thousand vacant street tree spaces, that's also an older assessment. Um, there, there is room for trees, whether the most strategic places is a different question. And I would, I would voice also that we, the city uh enforcement driving it, or trying to drive it, a lot of the time, we are trying to make those strategic spaces uh for planting in the future. Things like Street twenty thirty-five, the pedestrian design guide update, um, those sorts of activities.
Yeah, Jen, I guess part of my comment there is that I don't think we can be relying on being able to plant huge numbers of those trees on private property because of all the permissions and everything it takes, so that we would definitely want to be looking at public spaces for a lot of those trees.
Yeah, yep, we do think there's, from our assessments, a lot of space on public property as well. And um, well, we could, I I can keep going on this, and that's a detraction, so I'll leave it there for now.
Okay, great, thanks Jen. I would, I think I'm going to move, uh, does L come before G? No, G comes before L. Um, Megan, I think I'll go, I think you're next.
Yeah, well, first, I just want to give kudos to Roberta, who I, I know I provide some edits, but as always, puts together just really wonderful work. So I have to start by giving her kudos for her work, um, because it was amazing. Um, I feel like, you know, just a couple of things, comments that I would share in response to some things that have raised. One thing is, I I always think tree planting is important, and the reason I just bring this up is, but um tree planting is often the thing that can get funding, it is street tree maintenance that can't. So I I don't, just to respond to your comment, Adrian, I have no fear that money can go to tree planting. It is money to go to maintenance that is very hard to come by. So I would highlight, there's a very strategic reason that that was what we focused on. Like, everybody is like, plant trees, plant trees, maintaining them has been a a battle. Um, so I think that, and within the comment about the responsibility, I think what we're trying to get at, whether we could get at it better, is currently it is the adjacent property owner that has the responsibility for maintaining the tree. And we are trying to move that so that that is burden is not on them. So that is, perhaps we can do that better, and if people have suggested language, but this has been something the commission has been advocating for, is to take that out of the hands of the adjacent um property owner and that burden away from them. So I know those things um came up. I will also share that um I am less, I actually do think it's important to raise the administrative amount to some degree. I think, and I've had this through other conversations about this. Um, I think that the process of PSEF getting money out the door has been very inhibited by not having enough capacity to do it. So if we want to actually move money out the door, I think that they actually need more capacity to do it. So I'm not trying to say that we need to just bloat um our bureaucracy, but I do think that to effectively administer money, and and Micah might be able to add in on this, but I I do think it actually has hampered their process and slowed it down. And so what, whether we think twelve percent is the right amount, you know, I I I don't know. But I do think that there is a validity to that. And I know that just general concerns have come up around like moving money, right? From this very um, this PSEF process that is this really community-led process. And I I do think we, we all have that concern. And we also, I think, are excited about the opportunity for money to be strategically directed towards trees and potentially tree maintenance. So I think if we need to clarify that we are very aware of that concern and we still want the community involvement in how the money is spent, even if we have this strategic climate investment plan, um, I think we could probably strengthen how we say that. Because I think we're in an agreement that the intent of PSEF still needs to be really led by the community that the money is there for. So if people have suggestions about how we can do that better in the letter, I think that uh, we'd be very amenable to that. But I'm also just have to say, I'm excited to have money dedicated to trees and potentially to use it as an opportunity to pilot street tree maintenance, I think. Wow, have we been working the entire time on the commission to figure out how to do that? So this is one way we can get closer, that's exciting to me. That's it.
Great, thanks Megan. Really great to hear from you, um, Melinda.
Yeah, um, Megan actually addressed uh some of the the questions I had, just um negotiating what what Brenna's comments were about the language and and kind of intent. And I think just strengthening that um I I can go through and and add some things very specific as far as suggestions. But I loved the the clarification of instead of responsibility, it's it's burden of maintenance. And um, if that was more explicit, I think that would alleviate some concerns about, you know, city decision-making, top-down, you know, decision-making versus um bottom-up. And uh, let's see. The um, I, I was just wondering if if we know, if we could get more information about the twelve percent admin fee that's jumping from five to twelve. I absolutely understand the need for it, but it seems very specific, like, okay, we know that it's a certain percentage. Do they know that they need that amount? Could it be eight, you know? Like, how did, how did they come up with that number? Because looking at the overall amount, a percentage is kind of a big chunk. So those are my notes.
Great, thanks, Melinda. All right, um, I, I might, since I guess I'm the last one here, um, I might just quickly comment that I'm also very grateful, thanks, Roberta, um, pu- putting this together, uh, fielding all the feedback, um, situating it in a way that allows us to kind of address priorities, we've been talking, as Megan noted, we've been long talking about, um, it's very exciting. I I guess just for me, the quick, the two quick um thoughts is procedurally, I'm glad we have an opportunity to submit this letter. Um, I I will note that I, you know, prior to this happening, UFC wasn't engaged in any conversation about this at all. Um, I just want to note that for the record, that we had some interactions with Rubio's office, or I had some interactions with Rubio's office, we were going to meet with folks and it didn't materialize in any form, and then this thing uh of the resources allocation occurred. And I I procedurally, um, given that this is a a resident advisory um committee or and commission and that were appointed by council, it would have seemed procedurally for us to be in some way brought into that conversation about how these funds be allocated. And so that is, i- it's notable to me, and it's something that I I I still see the Urban Forestry Commission as an important entity in these conversations and identifying what the priorities are. They they, as you all noted, they hit many of the things, they like got many of the things we're working on, and then many of the minute, the minutes are online, so they can kind of see what the priorities are. But nevertheless, I think it's, it's um just as, uh, in terms of form. Um, the other quick comment that I have, I guess, is just around um the the kind of relationship between this particular investment that's happening over the next five years and the way that it's set up in relation to the suite of other things that are already in, that are uh, that are in place and that are gaining momentum. And I'm thinking, for example, like the Urban Forest Management Plan, the potential funding from the Inflation Reduction Act that's coming from the feds, the lining up of state, potential state funds, and Eric, uh, the Oregon Department of Forestry, interest in urban community, work like there are a number of other things that feel really substantial. And if this is like a program that's being that's being put forward and moving forward, how does it, is there any way we can in the letter um include language about the relationship between the proposed forty million dollars in funding here? Um, in the context of how to situate that, how to contextualize it, how to align it with other plans and programs that are uh either already gaining momentum, have had some attention already, or will soon fall upon um the the communities and the city that are involved in this work. So that's just, just a thought of of thinking about the coordination, whether there's anything happening there. I'd hate for all this money to kind of happen, and then all these other things to materialize and not knowing exactly how we're gonna. It's a good problem to have, of course, but nevertheless, um, it's still something that seems like it might require a little bit of forethought uh before we actually start spending money on on climate investment plans and things like that. So at least two thoughts um I wanted to uh express. Thanks again for your comments here, lots of rich material, um, I guess I'll turn it um over to Roberta um to check to see if there are any clarifications, any further fleshing out or anything. Assuming that um some of this material might be um helpful for the letter that we're going to eventually. I think we need to vote on this letter too, don't we, Brian? It's my understanding in previous letters, I know we've voted for, to write a letter, but then I imagine we'd have to vote to submit a letter, is that part of our process?
Yeah, we'll vote to approve the letter um and use to consider if they want a representative to provide uh oral oral testimony at at the, at the city council hearing.
Do we still have time to sign up for that?
Yes.
Okay, so two, two items, one is to vote on the, this letter and or uh with with or without any uh amendments on it. Um, and the second is to see if anyone has an interest in participating in city council on the nineteenth. Uh, Jen and then Roberta?
I just wanted to mention that um, Micah has a comment in the chat about being able to provide more information on the administrative fee, that twelve percent.
Okay, oh, Micah, that would actually be helpful, I think that came up a couple of times, so if you have any quick comment on that?
Yeah, yeah, um, just a couple of notes, I think, um, there were some, yeah, the current funding that is coming in is very different than what was initially um considered to be coming in when that five percent cap was um decided on by community. And um at the scale that the program is working at now and into the future, it definitely needs a higher cap in order to facilitate that. One major reason for that is the program itself is like really intentional in that it's trying to provide um opportunities for new communities to engage in these sort of programs. And that effort takes a lot of capa- staff capacity to um grant development, but more importantly, the implementation. And so um I'm not sure why twelve percent was chosen exactly, but um the need is definitely there for that, that further depth um that staff can provide to new emerging groups that are engaging in in this work for the first time. And then, yeah, the scale is the other piece. And then lastly, also, uh, with these climate investment plans, there's going to be a collaboration with other city bureaus. And so it's um, it's going to be able to um facilitate the coordination, kind of along to Vivek's um comments, uh, the the larger coordination of of different in bringing different investments and plans together towards like the shared implementation. So um, in that context, it will be able to to support that.
All right, thanks, Micah, Roberta?
This is a really great discussion, um.
You know, if you like, there's sort of three areas, it looked like we might be able to tweak the language a little bit to address some of the comments. The first one is in that paragraph where, the second paragraph where we're talking about applauding, you know, the elevating of the tree. Trees and green infrastructure is a component of the program. And Vivek, you, you know, we could add a sentence, a couple of sentences actually, to sort of say that one that introduces by saying the urban forestry commission really has a deep interest in, in this, in this and hopes to have, you know, early participation as it goes forward, kind of addressing that we, not to say we didn't or dwell on that, but to kind of signal that we, we really want to be engaged in this piece of the puzzle early. And then perhaps ending that paragraph with, you know, it's important to, to coordinate across related programs and align them to avoid duplication or potential missed opportunities. You talked about all these things coming down the pike. If you could provide one example that we would include in that sentence that would let them know what we mean, what would that be?
Well, there's a hundred and fifty million dollars a year from DC that's going to make its way into city. I mean, states are five groups that are eligible for this, but cities are one of them. And so that's one example I can off.
Yeah, that seems like an important one. So that would be, that'd be coordinating with the state really, right?
Right. Right. Well, the state is a separate entity that can apply for those funds, but cities are also individual entities that can apply and
What's the appropriate reference to that source?
Uh, still that, I mean, we, I, I think it's probably too early to be able to cite the source, but it is Inflation Reduction Act. It is
Okay.
mentioned that urban community forestry is specifically kind of line item in that. And it's, yeah.
So it's, it's the funds associated with urban forestry component of the Inflation Reduction Act. Okay.
Great.
So that could be in there. In the paragraph, the fourth paragraph about street tree maintenance, we could go with Brenna's suggestion to say that it's critical of the city take financial responsibility for maintaining Portland street tree assets as critical infrastructure. I really like getting the critical infrastructure in there a lot. And then on Melinda's comment and, and then either put as part of that same sentence or a separate sentence that this is involves, you know, essentially removing that, that financial burden on adjacent property owners, shifting the burden, you know, from and hence removing barriers to, to street tree planting. So I think that Megan and Melinda's clarification there.
Yeah.
We can do that. In the next to last paragraph about the code amendments, Brenna said that, you know, ensuring community involvement in that process, designing outcome of the climate investment plans is, you know, could be stronger. So I'm thinking something along the line of, you know, that they have to not only, you know, ensure that, but the, these, these, the, the plans, the process, the design outcomes actually have to reflect, you know, active dynamic community participation, not just involvement, but participation in developing those and sort of shift it. Although I don't have the words yet, but could work on that. So I don't have the language. If anybody wants, has specific language, you could put it in the chat. Otherwise, and I don't know, you know, I could do this or potentially, I mean, potentially we could, we could ask Brian if he wanted to make those pieces. But those are the pieces. I, I felt like on the administrative costs, it's, I, you know, I get what everybody's saying. I, I think there probably is a need for increase. Who knows what the right number is, but I'm not sure that that's the forestry commission's role is to pick a number, you know, or even if, if folks want us to raise issues about the administrative costs, then how we would do that and have that feel like that's a priority for us, the forestry commission, I, I would need someone to craft that, that statement. So and on Adrian's piece, I, you had talked about planting. If you, if there's ways you would, you know, I, I, I hear and kind of resonate with what Megan said about kind of emphasizing maintenance because planting hasn't, getting money for planning hasn't been the issue. But if you, if you want to make that point, you talked about synergy with, with partners and so forth, you could, you could give us a sentence that you'd like to see in there a couple, for sure.
Back Roberta, that very last paragraph where you talk about strengthening, you know, the work of marginalized communities, just adding some language about and having urban forestry and, you know, the infrastructure of the fund support those communities to be more successful.
Would you, would you mind putting a sentence together and, and then saying exactly where you think it should go? Cause I'm not sure.
Okay.
Brian, would, Brian, would it make sense? Oh, go ahead. Anybody else?
Melinda?
Yeah, it was, it was, I think a spin on what Adrian just said is that we acknowledge that the twelve percent would not just be administrative because it's, it's community outreach. So it's, it's twelve percent admin understanding that this goes towards, you know, necessary city overhead, but that it really is community outreach to these, these areas that need more tree coverage. I mean, that, I absolutely loved what, what Micah said it's going toward, so.
Okay, thank you. So can I, can I move us into a vote here? Is there, are we fleshed out anything else?
Do we just need to clarify? I feel like maybe Roberta was going to bring this up, like who's going to take on incorporating the changes? Is that what you're going to say, Roberta, or maybe?
Yeah, I mean, because, you know, I think we have some input from different people, but I don't know, is this, is this something that, you know, would it make sense to maybe for Brian to compile those and come up with something? Or I could work with Brian and because, just want to make sure it all flows. It typically, it seems like in my short experience that the commission has voted to adopt a letter with the conceptual changes that it discussed and not necessarily have to review the changes again. Although, you know, because just timeliness wise, the sooner we get this in, the sooner and better chance the council and others will read it. The other thing was is, and I know we have to talk about testimony, but it might be strategic to copy certain people in this letter other than just the commission members. It's going to the council members. Are there any others in terms of bureaus, bureau director or just, I guess if it goes to commission members, their staff, we'll see it. All the staff you all have been checking in with. I just didn't know if anybody we have CC Urban Forestry Commission, is there anyone else who would be strategic to have them see this letter?
Yeah, we can talk about that as well, Roberta. But I'd really like us to kind of get to a point where we're conceptually agreeing to any of the that were proposed. And then we can talk about the mechanism. Generally, Brian has sent it to city council and then we've gotten it. I mean, we can talk about strategy as well, but I, I really would like to get a vote. Daniel looks like he just left and looks like he's in support of it. I don't know if we can count that as a vote. Looks like there's quorum without his vote as well, but we can't, until I call a vote, I don't think we can consider his vote. So I, one, two, three, four, five, six. Okay. I think we're, we're good right now. So I, I would love to have a motion to conceptually this letter, these changes, we can move forward on for any of you who would like to review the letter one more time. That's a, that totally available to you. But let me, let me see if there's a, a call for a vote. Or I'd like to call a vote. I'd like a motion on the floor. Anybody?
I, I moved that we, that we adopt the letter with the conceptual changes we talked about.
And I second.
Thanks, thanks, Roberta. Thanks, Adrian. A call of vote, all in favor? The motion on the table? Virtual or physical hand? Okay, it's unanimous. Thank you all. So moved. And then anybody interested in participating on the nineteenth? City council? What time is that, Brian? Or at least what's the general expectation?
Yeah, it would be sometime between nine thirty and twelve thirty, depending on when it comes up in, in the agenda. It, it, I would guess something like this would be a time, time certain item, which would have a more definitive start time.
In person or virtual?
Either, actually. They're doing both. So Zoom, Zoom is fine.
I think that if Roberta is available, she would be phenomenal at doing this, but I can't decide for her.
I'll be, I'll be in Tennessee. Sorry. Hopefully, hopefully in some old growth forests out there in the Smoky, the Smoky Mountains. But I'll be thinking about you all, I'm sure.
Well, I can, I can check in with you, Roberta, about this as well. And if there's a time certain, then there's much more likely that I could potentially help out, Brian. So that might be not, I'm happy to play second string here, for sure.
I can't do it, so.
Okay, I'll check in with other commissioners, see if anyone's interested as well. But Brian, let's stay in touch about potentially my participation. All right. Thanks, everybody. Went a little bit over, but really appreciate your thoughtful comments. Thanks, Roberta, of course, for all of this enormous lifting you did.
So really quick, we have to just ascertain who's going to do this, the changes to the letter and Brian, are you available? I mean, Jen, Jen is Brian. Is it okay if I ask Brian if he's available? Cause I'm preparing to leave town and it's kind of crazy, but I could send something to you. I can send a few things to you, but the piece that Melinda talked about and
Yeah, could, could Roberta maybe send like your revisions based on the conversation and the vote of the commission? And send it to Brian and me and Ashley. And between the three of us, we could make sure that they get captured and sent. Does that sound okay, Brian, Ashley?
Yep. That's perfect.
Brian, if you want another, I'm happy not to incorporate the edits, but if you want someone to do a quick review, at least from like a policy committee perspective, I'm happy to at least review it. I reviewed Roberta's before. It was amazing. So not much to comment, but I can at least add comments from a commissioner perspective.
That would be great. Thanks, Megan.
Just a reminder, and I'm sure you're aware of this, Megan, that we won't be able to change any of the sentiments that the commission voted to approve. Okay.
Yeah, no, just to ensure I feel that it captures what we discussed from a commissioner, just not change any content, so to speak.
All right. Thank you all. Oh, boy, that was a fast, furious meeting for sure. Special time and we'll see you next week on Thursday. All right.
Thanks, everybody. Appreciate it.